Okay, I guess we'll get started. Good evening, my name is John Yater. I am Chairperson of the Planning and Zoning Commission and will be presiding over the Commission's deliberations on hearing items this evening. Planning and Zoning Commission sits in advisory capacity to the Town Council and reviews planning and zoning issues and forwards recommendations regarding these important issues to the Council. This evening's proceedings will be conducted using the following format. First, I will read the hearing application into record. Following the identification of the hearing application, staff will present the case and their recommendations to the Commission, after which questions from the Planning and Zoning Commission will be directed to the staff. After Commission initially reviewed the application, the floor will be open for comments, at which time the applicant will have an opportunity to comment regarding the matter and answer any questions. It is at this point that I will open the floor to general comments from the public regarding the planning case before the Commission. I ask that you direct your pertinent comments to Commission through the Chairperson and not to the applicant, staff, or individuals within the audience. I would also appreciate your cooperation in making your statements brief and to the point. So with that, we're going to go on to the regular agenda. We'll have, right now, would you like to introduce our invocation?
Yes, Pastor Charlie Hale, he's going to do it. And we appreciate you, Charlie, Pastor, for coming in. Thank you.
Stand, please. Remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Join with me if you would. Heavenly Father, we consider it a wonderful expression of grace that we get to live in such a beautiful community. Lord, would you guide these folks tonight to make the best decisions possible for this community? Guide their words, guide their actions, so that when all is said and done, we will say that we have honored You. We give thanks and we pray for protection for the first responders of our community and also for those that are in the armed forces from Prescott Valley. Protect and watch over them, especially those in scary places. Thank You for Your grace upon our lives through Jesus Christ. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public who stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Vicki, would you please call roll?
Commissioner Rutherford?
Present.
Commissioner Rankin?
Present.
Commissioner Roberts?
Present.
Commissioner Dusky?
Absent.
Commissioner Zercher?
Present.
Vice Chairperson Dreeves?
Present.
And Chairperson Yater.
Present. Next item is the approval of minutes. Do we have any changes? And then I would ask for a motion to approve the minutes. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second it.
Are you all saying?
Yes.
Aye?
Aye.
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 We get it. Okay, that was pretty good. I guess we'll go into our next item. Our next agenda item is announcements. Does anybody have any? Richard, do you have an announcement?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. I wanted to let you know that I have been in contact with Commissioner Rick Dusky. I wanted to express to you, Mr. Chairman, and you, Vice Chairman, his support of your duties, and he believes he's on amend. He would like to continue service to the town of Prescott Valley and maintain his position on the Planning and Zoning Commission. He was unable to make this evening's meeting, but he has every intention to make himself available for future meeting as his health improves. But I wanted to say hello, Rick. I hope he's having an opportunity to watch this live streaming, I'm sure, at his place of residence. But with that, I wanted to give you that update.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Rick, for your very kind words in your email, and get well, please. Okay, we'll go on to our public hearing items. And the first action item we have is PDP 15-001. Upon the application of Granville Development Company, Joe Contadino, President, consideration of an amended preliminary development plan for the proposed northwest phase of the Granville project comprising 1,325 single-family resident units on approximately 444 acres, representing a gross density of three dwelling units per acre, subject property located west of and adjacent to Granville Hill Road north of the Santa Fe Loop.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. You're looking at on the screen and in your packet, you have an illustration identifying the property that's being considered for revised preliminary development plan. The property is zoned R1LPAD. That means that the PAD overlays the property and its site plan specific. In 1999, a master development plan combined with a development agreement was approved for the Granville project, and later construction began in 2002 after completing all the technical submittals that were necessary to support subsequent final development plans. The project has progressed over the course of the last 10-plus years and is now coming to near the conclusion of the project where they're looking towards the northwest phase, which is currently the only remaining undeveloped section of the property. The Council has reviewed and approved final development plans, which basically consume all of the properties south of the Santa Fe Loop. Coincidentally, they're looking at one on Friday, excuse me, next Thursday as well, which will culminate the development on the south side of Santa Fe Loop. Moving to the north, because of the availability of the sewer trunk line, the first phase of the project will occur in the immediate or the very top northwestern quadrant of the northwestern section of the property. Mr. Contadino has been very dutiful in trying to, one, arrange the product so as to make available, two, consumers a full range of lot sizes, all the way down to 55 wides, and in this project, all the way up over 100-foot wide lots. In doing so, he's also reconfigured this northwestern portion to eliminate what was previously proposed as a golf course. Because of the declining interest in developing golf, frankly because of the aging community and the fact that younger people are not playing golf quite as much now, it no longer is really a viable land use. That's stemming from my experience. So on that basis, he's reconfigured this northwestern segment where he hasn't sold any lots, which would be subject of a public report, and in reliance on that public report, people in other areas of the project have purchased lots along what potentially would be fairways or now are large open space tracks. So with that in mind, he's able to move forward into this portion of development without any consequence to the public report and consumer protection associated with that report. He submitted the project also to maximize utilization of pre-declaration water. You on the Commission understand the value of that, but many people at home would benefit from the understanding that after the '99 plat rush, Department of Water Resources designated that we were in an unsustainable water situation and declared that we were in a groundwater mining position. It was on that basis that pre-declaration water watered all of the existing subdivisions, and we benefited from affluent credits that accrue to the town of Prescott Valley. Every time somebody uses water in the town, it's returned through the wastewater treatment plant to the ground. So the applicant proposes to maximize and achieve the full density that was specified for the project, which is now illustrated in what is known as the northwest section. Couple of issues came up as part of staff's review, and I would reiterate only for the public, you have these in your packet. The roadway configurations and the Glassford Hill Road improvements, as part of the development agreement for the project, there is a requirement that the Universal Homes and Joe Contadino do improvements to ultimately cause a six-lane section for Glassford Hill Road to be established through the entire reach of the project. That's been established in the future, and we now endeavor to put a pinpoint on that to determine exactly when that's going to be, so it's clear for the developer, it's clear for the town, so that we can coordinate potentially other road projects to coincide with improvements to Glassford Hill. Secondarily, there's a need to provide access, and this site plan shows just south of the most northerly northwestern quadrant, a residential collector which is proposed to provide secondary access to a signalized intersection on Tuscany Way that intersects presently Glassford Hill Road. That's necessary to drain traffic from the project that you know as Glassford Heights, which is moving through the final technical reviews prior to coming forward to the Town Council and yourselves with preliminary and final development plans. Presently, there is a 70-foot collector established through what was previously a fairway and is a portion of a drainage way. Staff is somewhat concerned that 70 feet may not be adequate. However, the developer has expressed the willingness to work with the town in order to achieve our objective, and that is to have a residential collector, two lanes in either direction with a median very similar to the current configuration of Santa Fe Loop. The parks and open space for the project corresponds to 3,400 units, which requires approximately 6.2 acres per 1,000 residents, which is a national standard, which was included in the development agreement for the project. On that basis, there's a requirement that the Granville Project establish approximately 60 acres of public parklands within the project. Previously, the development agreement spoke to the opportunity for the developer to buy portions of Awa Fria Park, which is immediately adjacent to the first phase of the project, and then assemble those acreages, give them to the town of Prescott Valley. Through a IGA with the State Land Department, it's no longer necessary for that action. Rather, the town of Prescott Valley has negotiated that pre-development on the state trust lands, and so that opportunity no longer avails itself to the developer. It's on that basis that Mr. Contadino has expressed the willingness to identify sites within his project that he'll convey to the town of Prescott Valley to meet the 30-acre threshold or requirement for the project. I've included in my briefing to you the fact that amendments to the Town Code enable me to administratively approve minor deviations to preliminary and final development plans. Initially elected to pursue that action based on responses from state as well as town and county agencies suggesting that this was a minor modification. However, inasmuch as there were several issues that really need to be addressed in total before we move forward and conclude this project, we thought it was worthwhile to bring it to the Planning and Zoning Commission, put a highlight to the stipulation so that we have a very clear path forward into the future to finalize development. It's with that said that staff recommends approval of the amended preliminary development plan and sets forth three stipulations for your consideration, principally, again, to address those remaining issues that need to be addressed prior to concluding this project. I don't believe there is a representative from Granville here this evening. I didn't see one initially. However, Mr. Chairman, I would certainly attempt to respond to any questions you or the Commission may have.
Thank you, Richard. Commission members, do we have any questions? Hearing that, call to the public, is there any questions about this case? Hearing none? Entertain a motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we forward a recommendation of approval of PDP 15-001 to the Council with the referenced recommendations.
Second, please.
I'll second.
Point of clarification, if I may, if the maker of the motion would understand that you're not forwarding a recommendation. The Commission is approving the preliminary development plan. So on your own initiative, you would be approving the plan, not forwarding a recommendation.
Okay. Still want a second, Ted?
Yeah, I'll second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Rankin?
Yes.
Commissioner Rutherford?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Zercher?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Dreeves?
Yes.
And Chairperson Yater.
Yes. We'll go on to our next agenda item. That would be RP 15-002. Upon the applicant of MPM Investments LLC, consideration of a reversionary plat to replat parcels one and two of the Fairway Patio Home subdivision into revised lots one-r and two-r, and to remove the southern 50 feet of original parcel from the subdivision to utilize for a commercial use in conjunction with Prescott Golf and Country Club Pro Shop. Subject property located along the west side of Tapadaro Drive immediately north of Prescott Country Club Golf Course in Prescott Country Club area. Richard.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Joe's done a really good job in his briefing describing this proposal. I'll take you back and summarize. Several months ago, the Planning and Zoning Commission considered and recommended approval of a zoning map change which would correspond to 50 feet of previously a residentially-zoned property. The Town Council accepted your recommendation and unanimously approved that zoning map change. Attendant to that zoning map change were several stipulations, those of which are listed in the staff brief. First and foremost was approval of a final development plan. That occurred a couple of weeks ago to the Town Council, and now you're being asked to look at an administrative review of a reversionary plat. The staff was concerned that this be illustrated and then ultimately placed in the public domain in the county recorder's office. Having done a lot of title work in a previous life, that's often a lot better than quick claim processes through the county recorder. The town of Prescott Valley is the only jurisdiction on the face of the earth that I'm aware of that does reversionary plats. Other communities such as Yavapai County, City of Prescott, cause it to be administratively reviewed and ultimately recorded in the recorder's office. The genesis of reversionary plats was basically the creation of the improvement district, which enabled sewers to be developed throughout the town of Prescott Valley. And it was important that everybody pay an assessment, and many people who had multiple lots clamored to the Council and said, "We're concerned that we have to pay two assessments because we have a property that it doesn't lend itself to two lots. We've built over a lot line, a variety of different reasons." So on that basis, the town staff initiated a process that would put this publicly in the record to say that these properties cannot be divided. Well, lo and behold, after the assessments took place, many people found that this isn't a bad deal, it's not so draconian, I'm going to split my property out, hint, hint, wink, wink, I don't have to pay an assessment. So that was a way, very drastic, but certainly good record-keeping process. At least during the initial time that I was here in the early 1990s, we did probably 10 or 12 reversionary plats every agenda item. We slowed down quite a bit because people aren't combining or separating parcels quite as frequently as they used to, principally because we've got a lot of planetary development product in the market. So the second stipulation was a requirement that the reversionary plat be depicted so as to show that there be either a combination of the adjoining residential lot or that two lots would be created, none of which would have frontage less than 100 feet in length. Before you now is a reversionary plat. It does just this, and this is probably the best illustration showing that Lot 2R will be almost a half an acre and 100 feet in width, and same thing with Lot 1R, almost half an acre and 100 and looks like 26.70 feet in width. This is a technical submittal. The last couple of comments I'm going to make regard a letter that I received from a woman named Debbie Fouts in the country club, expressing some concern about posting requirements for this type of submittal. This item appears on your agenda as an action item. Action items are defined by Town Code as being administrative functions of a public body. They include, but are not limited to subdivision plats where you have entitlement already taking place where the zoning is in place, a reversionary plat, and a variety of other action items. This is not a public hearing, so on that basis, the requirement for posting action items are to place them in the three designated locations as specified by Town Code, which is approved by the Town Council. This building happens to be one of those public spaces. There's a bulletin board dedicated for that purpose outside, and there are others throughout the town of Prescott Valley in public buildings. In turn, also, I'd asked the staff to make sure that this was advertised. That is not a requirement of Town Code or state law, but it did appear as a notice in the local paper, again, to be as transparent as possible. I have received one other letter in regard to this application. I believe that's been provided to you, and the concern is my advocacy towards development for the town of Prescott Valley. With that, I intended to address the issues that I've heard regarding this application to date. I'm available to you, Mr. Chairman, to respond to any questions. Tim Hendrickson is here, I believe, on behalf of the applicant, and he is designated as the contractor for the project.
Thank you, Richard. Any comments from the commission? Any questions? Hearing that, any comments from, would you like to have a word, or you want to come in and have a word, give us your name? Come on up, just because. For the record, your name?
Michael Timothy Hendrickson. I go by Tim Hendrickson. I'm local here.
Address?
My kids own the golf course.
Oh, okay.
I bought the remainder land that the Fanes owned on Tapadaro. I'm the one that was forceful in putting the sewer in and getting it up and operational, getting the old abandoned sewer treatment plant off of a line, or not abandoned sewer treatment plant that was operational on Tapadaro. And subsequently, I sold the land to Mr. Matthews. I am under contract to build this cart storage garage for him, and subsequently a custom home, you know, during the summer or whenever it slows down a little bit for the next part of it. It's a 20, it's a rather large block structure. We got it for his storage, for his stuff on the side, and we're going to store some golf carts for some of our people that don't have garage space in their homes.
Okay.
We've been hoping to start it, we're hoping to have it done by now, but it's been a long process, and we're anxious to get going on it.
Okay. Just for the record, I was here the last meeting we had, just for today.
Okay.
Any questions?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
My name is Martha Duncan, and I know that you received a copy of the letter from Debbie Fouts, and then also last week from Mr. Dennis Jennings and his wife, Kiki. So we have given notice in writing, and also I'm here to say publicly that we are opposed to that. For the one basis is that it was supposed to be a garage for Mr. Matthews to store a few of his friend's carts, no more than eight, and on this reversionary plat that they have, it is to be used in conjunction with the Prescott Golf and Country Club, and we always knew that was the issue. It's never going to be for Mr. Matthews or his house. So we just publicly are announcing our disapproval of that, of the garage, of everything that they have led us to believe that is not what we understand was the original items and the way it was presented to you and to us in October, November. And other than that, just basically, we're letting our objections be known, and under the advice of our attorney, that's what he told us today, was all that we should do is make sure you had those letters and make sure you knew publicly that we disapproved of it, and that we firmly believe all the people in that area, it's never going to be Mike Matthews' garage, it's additional storage for the golf course, and that's how it'll turn to be, and we will continue to object, and I appreciate the opportunity. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Hearing that? Questions from the commission? Oh, yes, sir, I'm sorry.
My name is Dennis Jennings. I'm speaking for my wife and myself on this. She owns the property immediately north, or one of the properties immediately to the north of the proposed replat. Our problem is that this is just the partial endpoint in a long, long series of, should we say, less-than-perfect notification. When we got the issue of including the Tapadaro sewer in, fine, that was great, but somehow or another, this also included this enormous gerrymander for including the golf course, which although technically was there, it was kind of like having the fourth line from the end of your resume saying, "Oh, yes, I have five felony convictions." It was not very obvious. We had, again, from that time, we've had an application for condos and what have you, and notification certainly did not go out in any rational fashion. My wife's property is 178 feet from the edge of one of those parcels, no notification. In this case here, the property is not apart, up there and not apart, and there was absolutely no notification. Now, apparently, notification is just one of these little things that we might do, we might not do. I don't understand how that works. My wife spent 20 years representing the Health Department, City of Anchorage, planning and zoning hearings. I'm a land surveyor from Alaska, spent 50 years in land surveying, 30 as registered land surveyor, been to a lot of public hearings. I have never, ever seen the planning staff work as an advocate for the developer, which has been resolutely the case here. This is not impropriety, it certainly has the appearance of impropriety, which can be deadly. The interests of the public are not represented by this planning staff, the interests of the city are barely represented by planning staff, the interests of the developer, well, they're pretty well-covered.
Okay.
Again, there are certain things that I do not understand. How, after the clarity of the stipulations of the last meeting, we suddenly do not have that clarity included in this current final proposal, and we have the extraction of the property in question from the subdivision, which is basically to get out from under the oversight of Prescott Country Club Owners Association. I can think of no other reason for it. And with that, I will close. If there are any questions, I'll entertain them.
I don't think we have any, do we? Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Julie, no? Julie, no, yes.
I have a, Richard asked Richard a question.
Go ahead. Richard?
You may be repeating yourself, Richard, but I think it's necessary. What are the notifications? Do you want to emphasize that people have been notified the way we notify them, and that your purpose of your position to the community?
Well, a couple of things.
Excuse me, Richard. Richard? No, I'm fine. Excuse me. Mr. Parker's going to reiterate what he discussed in his presentation about notifications. Go ahead.
There is seemingly a misunderstanding about the requirement for public notice, which is actually outlined in state law, it's replicated in the town code. A public hearing is noticed with a radius of 300 feet. The notice is derived from the public record with the county recorder, excuse me, the county assessor's office. The Town of Prescott Valley also requires that there be a public hearing, excuse me, public meeting process to endeavor to get people talking about their issues before they come before this commission. That notice requirement has a radius of 1,000 feet. I do know that prior to a previous application coming to you, there was a public meeting. I didn't attend that public meeting purposely, didn't attend that public meeting. There is no requirement for any kind of notice relative to a subdivision, which is an ministerial review by you folks and the town council to make sure that the standards of the town are met, nor is there such a requirement for a reversionary plat, which is the process that you're undertaking or looking at this evening. This action this evening was contemplated as part of an action previously recommended to the town council, to clarify and put on public record why this property was being divided and how it was being divided, for the purpose of isolating 50 feet, which was rezoned by the town council for commercial uses. Also then to cause the remainder to meet the town standards, whether those two parcels were combined or separated, making sure that there was a minimum of 100 feet in width. I'm the community development director for the Town of Prescott Valley. I supervise the community development department comprising building safety, code enforcement, and the planning department. I take exception to remarks that we're doing something underhanded. I'd be happy to talk with anybody who would venture. I've talked with Mr. Jenkins previously after a public meeting at the town council. All stipulations associated with the previous rezoning are not going to be affected in any way, shape, or form based on an action on a reversionary plat. The requirement for use of the facility is on record and will be administered through code enforcement as specified by approval by the town council. With that, did I answer your question?
Yes, you did.
Thank you.
Thank you, Richard.
I was just, actually, going to just say maybe for the record, why don't we reiterate what, you know, Mr. Matthews, by right, has the right to build a garage, you know, maybe recap just that for the record and for transparency?
As was stated many times previously, you can build a 2,000-square-foot garage on your property. However, the aspect of this use that caught our eye, the planning staff, was the fact that they were going to use a portion of this, up to 800 square feet, to store golf carts for his friends. And in drilling deeper, we determined that there would be some sort of compensation associated with that privilege. So on that basis, we determined it was a commercial use, and we brought it to the Planning and Zoning Commission. You at your home can build your 2,000-square-foot garage, but you can't lease it out to your friends to use it for any purpose other than your own needs. However, a commercial garage, a portion of it could be sublet for the purpose of somebody else storing their, in this case, golf cart in that facility. So I believe it's been very upfront. Maybe people may disagree with me, I've been doing this for a long time, I understand rules and I follow them. But with that, that was the whole basis that we caused the applicant to come through the process. They looked at me like I was a nut because I was causing them to go through a process to enable them to use their property that was a permitted use as a matter of right. However, I've detailed the reason why it came before you and ultimately the town council.
Thank you, Richard.
Thank you, Richard. That all from the commission?
Martha Duncan.
Very, yeah, very briefly, please.
The one reason, I have concern how they have revised this and moved this to a commercial area, because the one thing that was important in the golf course under the CCNRs, the president of the golf course, or not of the golf course, excuse me, of the POA there, had sent a letter to Mr. Tarkowski, Richard, to all of you, "You cannot build a garage before you build your house." So my understanding and probably some of the implication here is so that they can go forward, pull this off, and build their commercial garage, because Mr. Matthews is not going to build a house, his house, on that lot. So that's part of the reason, is the POA does not allow you to build a garage before you build a house. And I'm just making that statement for you guys to think about, and I'm pretty sure that has a lot to do with why this is being pulled off and resectioned. Just my opinion. Thanks.
Okay, with that, I'm going to close. Any other comments? I'm going to request and entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move that we approve RP 15-002.
Do I have a second?
A second.
It's been approved, second. Rule call, please.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Rankin?
Yes.
Commissioner Rutherford?
Yes.
Commissioner Zercher?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Dreeves?
Yes.
And Chairperson Yater?
Yes, and with that, we'll go to our, I guess, our last agenda item, and that would be a call to the public. Gary?
Our call to the public, consideration and discussion of comments from the public. Those wishing to address Planning and Zoning Commission need to request, do not need to request permission in advance. Action taken as a result of a public comment will be limited to directing staff to study the matter or reschedule the matter for further consideration and discussion at a later date.
Thank you very much. And with that, I will adjourn the Planning and Zoning Commission, May 11th. I'm going to call on an event. Thank you.